...for the application, so my parents were on a trip and they all came in at the same time and I had them all on the kitchen counter or table and my dad just took post-it notes. Pepperdine, yeah, nice try. What's the UCL? Yeah, right. You know, it was all like, you know, I wanted to go to Pepperdine in the worst way, Malibu on the cliffs.
So that's California?
Yeah, everything was, I wanted to go to one of my school for California. He's like, nope.
We, friends of ours, both kids went to Indiana and, you know, I mean, you know, they never brought the stuff home, you know, store it, flying, it just, it really changed the dynamic of, you know, the schools.
Rose Holman, as for my son's fall of his. Never liked going to one of Jared's school in the country.
Which, which school?
Rose Holman in Indiana.
I'm embarrassed out here, but I've never even heard of it.
I didn't either.
I just hired a guy from, actually, he and his brother both went there to Rensselaer. They're like, this started brilliant, this two kids, really good, that's a great school. Rensselaer Polytechnic.
Call the meeting in order, all call please.
Mayor Cooley.
Present.
Mr. Burnham.
Yes.
Mr. Leo.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Wade.
Here.
Mr. Yankton.
Here.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnersville News, Carrier News, Star Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk, and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December 29, 2015. Please all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this point in the meeting, the mayor and council welcome comments from any member of the public to help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speaker shall limit their comments to five minutes. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so we can pick properly reflect it in a minute. Anybody from the public wishing to be heard? Okay, if it's about Hyview, we're gonna, we have a separate presentation for you guys and we'll, we'll let it go here, but sir, could you put your hand up first?
My name is Edward Murray, I live at Somerset Hill Village, condominiums all down the road, and there are other, some other residents with me. I'm here to object to what I feel is the improper application of the town fire ordinance to our dwellings. There's no other, I don't believe there's another condominium complex in the state that's subject to this type of ordinance. Fifteen or twenty years ago, whenever it was written, it was written for rental units, so, rental, and apartments, so that the landlords would make sure that things were safe with their tenants. The ordinance, the state, talks about rental units, it has no comment about owner-occupied dwellings, which we live in. For some reason, the fire marshal, whoever it was, exempt, we have ten buildings, exempted building nine because they have two units and one wall in between them. If that's the case, if that's the reason, they have to exempt all the units in the condominium except units A and D, which have two shared walls. My last comment is that I have privacy concerns. I don't like local government officials entering my house without a proper warrant and subjecting me to fines and liens if I don't comply. I don't have a rental unit, I don't rent out any part of my place, and it's not a public So I think this ordinance, this fire ordinance, does not apply to me or many of my neighbors, and I wish that the town council would reconsider the application of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Eric Warner, I'm a Niterian, I'm also a resident of Somerset Hills Village. We've been going back and forth over this issue by email, pretty much every single number of this condominium complex is vehemently opposed to this ordinance, we do feel that is a reaching. I couldn't agree with Mr. Murray enough that no other municipality applies it in this sense. It is really traditionally meant for tenements, for tenement buildings, for rental units, it is not meant for owner-occupied units that are separated by firewalls. And I agree with Mr. Murray that he said that we simply don't want incursion of local government to our homes, that's, that's all. So, but, pretty much, it would, it would appear to me at this time that just about every member of the complex is opposed to this, uh, applications for this.
Okay, thank you, and we will review this further as a governing body. Anyone else? Call the, Patton?
Pat McLeod, Roundtop Road. I'm here in the open space committee.
I think that's, I sent you a note about closed session.
Pardon me?
Oh, yeah, in closed session, I believe, the request.
Okay, we're here to ask you about if you would be closed session, talk about two pieces of property that people will discuss with you, and if you were really interested, which we all hope you are, in putting them on the open space wish list, then could you then consider having appraisals done on them?
Yes, we'll discuss that further.
And then the other thing is, we are gonna start in the spring, finishing up the trail, the Roundtop Trail, and hopefully GPS one through a rain.
Okay.
So when we get that, depending on how much, it's not gonna be an expensive thing to put the markers and things in, but if we came back and asked if funds would be available.
We reviewed the budget, um, did you guys discuss it in any budget presentations yet?
We did, Ralph, it's a nominal amount of money, and we also have some matching funds from a private source.
Okay, so we're in support of it.
Thanks, John.
It's a good project, yes.
Can we just say, we're here to hear about the, Mrs. Brandt, the list of the true green residents, do we have to talk about that?
Yes.
So we just wanted to come and, I'm not sure if we can talk now.
It's on item of business, so, yes.
Can we talk then?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. There's seats up front, folks, if you folks wanna come in, instead of standing in the doorway.
Are we going to be permitted some sort of debate on this issue, or is this something that the council is going to discuss amongst a lot of?
We'll, we'll review this and it'll be on a future agenda, we'll have to review it with the fire official and everything, so.
Will be on a future agenda?
Yes.
Could we, could we request the stay, because I believe that we're all required within thirty days of receiving the notice to pay the money, and we've all received it, I believe, about two or three weeks ago, so may we kindly respectfully request the stay, the requirement, to make that payment until council has fully and thoroughly debated this issue.
I don't have a problem with that, just a kind of change in procedures, or whether there be no change, I've been with it for at least six years, so there's maybe a different application, so I would suggest it be on the next agenda, and that there'll be a moratorium between now and the next meeting.
Okay.
That would be very appreciated, thank you.
All in favor of that?
This was due on January, no, February 30th, when was it actually due? I mean, we ought to have a start, but if we're delaying it thirty days, we ought to put down what the, the date we're delaying it to.
Well, assuming the council and the mayor respectfully decide that the ordinance should nevertheless apply, notwithstanding our arguments, then we, we would just request, you know, that a date certain be set at the next council meeting, when, when we, when a decision is given to us from the board.
And that makes sense, so we can.
There's a moratorium enforcement between now and the next.
What is your response date? What's your deadline, so to speak, on, on the?
On top of my head, the thirteenth probably is our response.
Thirteenth of February?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so do you wanna make it from there? I mean, extend it thirty days?
Thirty days from the thirteenth, fine.
Well, again, assuming that, assuming the board, assuming the council and the mayor decide that the ordinance should nevertheless apply, then.
Just saying, in case it takes a little extra time to review.
Yeah.
Let's do this, let's do it from the twenty, twenty second, because we're, we'll have to have a decision.
I think what we should do is, is have a moratorium on enforcement till the twenty second, then at the twenty second, new deadlines can be set.
Okay.
Decide that this is a mandatory course, no more questions.
We was always trying to say, thank you.
And just for the record, if you'd tell us who signed the petition, the summons, so that we have that, we can.
Who, sir?
If you, who signed the, the summons, or whatever you got?
Well, no, no, we, we don't have any summons, no, I don't believe any summons were issued to us, yeah.
Oh, okay, you didn't.
Right, the fire official is, has indicated that we will be issued summonses and fines and penalties, if we fail to pay within thirty days of a letter that was, that was mailed to us about three weeks ago.
And just for the signature, because some people stand in for acquisitions.
Is it fire prevention, or?
John Savile, John Savile, Fred Wright, the fire, you're right.
Thank you, okay, that's why I just.
Please discuss a agreement.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public session? Sir?
My name is Mike Danclaff, I'm a one-person business.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't catch your name.
Michael Danclaff. I'm an ecologist, I'm a one-person business, I work for government, not profits, and I'm just here to support the resolution that you're considering for deer management on municipal properties. A few years back, I measured forest health on a private piece of property in town, and it was horrible. Basically, the deer, I completely removed the native understory, leave it behind, in some places, nothing, in some places.
Excuse me, sir, this ordinance is on for night for introduction, and we're gonna have a public hearing on this ordinance, um, the next meeting on February 27th, so to be fair for everyone on the twenty second, I don't wanna get into back and forth with the deer management program here.
Mayor, I don't know, Dr. Danclaff, do you have a conflict in, because I don't think we had a date for the next meeting?
Yeah, I'd have to check, I don't have.
Okay.
Twenty second.
You may have had a conflict, so, Mayor, I believe, Jack, speaking of.
It's up to the mayor, I mean, if he does have a conflict, he can speak and protect my mouth.
Sure, if you have a conflict, we'll put you on record this evening.
I'll be very brief.
Okay, fine.
Could you ask him to come forward, we're not gonna take him off from back there?
Come forward, Michael.
Come forward, it's my responsibility.
Right here, right there, there you go.
Okay, so my name is Michael Danclaff, I'm an ecologist, I have a PhD from Rutgers and about twenty-five years of experience. I, I do support passing the resolution to allow deer management on town lands, and I've seen firsthand what the forest looks like on private property in town, and I've seen photos of many of the places that are being considered for deer management, and they absolutely do need them. They show all the telltale signs of deer overabundance, it's a lack of native growth in the understory where deer could reach, and you either have forests that have nothing in them, or in parts, they have invasive species that they don't eat. So it's, I've seen this pattern all over the state, it's, it's not different, and it's, it's as bad or worse here as anywhere else, so I just definitely wanted to, to sort of voice my support for deer management, and, you know, I think, I hope that it passes, and if it does pass, I would certainly urge an implementation that's carefully thought out, because basically, the allowance of deer management, or the allowance of hunting, isn't enough unless it's very directed at reducing the deer population. And I've done deer management programs for, for various folks, and I've sort of, in the trenches day to day with deer management and, and running deer management programs, and it's very important how you run them. So obviously, the first step is, you know, committing to, to starting a deer management program, but as important is how it's implemented, and really basically focusing on the harvesting of does in order to affect a, a lower deer, deer population. And I know that in some places, the deer population has been down, in parts of states due to blue tongue and EHD, but the forests tell you whether there's too many deer. If, if it's empty, or only filled with invasive species, you don't see native regrowth, there's too many deer, and the exact number, or how many it was higher, when and lower when, the forest tells you, with brutal honesty, the forest tells you whether there's too many deer or not. So, you know, I definitely support deer management and effective deer management.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Yes, sir.
How you doing?
How you doing tonight?
I got one hand out, please.
Okay.
I'm one short, sorry.
We can cheer.
Okay. I just came with a couple of questions, Tom Wood, Leavenworth Street, I got my land and building assessment postcard, and been in town for a few years, and every year, my land and building goes up a couple thousand, and this year it took a jump of seventeen thousand seven hundred, quite impressive, made me feel good, my house would work more money, but why? Now, I'm not gonna hide the fact, I have a couple of permits, I am doing improvements, but what I fear is when I close them out, it's gonna go up even more, so I was just kinda wondering how the assessment works, I know I had it walked through two and a half years ago, and he said, I'll see you again in five years, and I got a notice last week, he's back.
Okay.
Do you think I'm gonna let him in my house? No, it's been done, so I'm just wondering how we get to these figures, again, a couple grand a year, as you can see in the past, understandable, seventeen thousand, almost eighteen, blew my mind, I'm sure I know what it's gonna do to my taxes this year.
Actually, mine went up too, so.
I mean, Christie is leaving off.
I think you've gotta speak to the assessor, the assessor knows a report to the council, he actually works for the state, and the county tax board, if it could be having it subdue and you're not satisfied, then you can file a tax appeal, which has to be filed by April 1st with the county tax board, but the council doesn't have any input into the assessment process.
All right.
And if you check with the clerks, he'll be able to give you the assessor's direct extension.
Okay, yeah, I got it, a little, I missed your card, you left it at my door. I'm gonna talk to you guys before I call them up.
Thanks.
Congratulations, either your house is more valuable.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the public? I am not on the agenda? Seen none? Close the open session? Presentations, John, you wanna wait till we get to Hyview? Okay. All right, items of business, ordinance, entertain a motion to move that ordinance sixteen dash seventeen ten, amending the Borough Firearms Ordinance to allow authorized deer management hunt on borough-owned properties, and amending chapter three of the Borough Code entitled Police Regulations, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning seven PM on February 22nd, 2016.
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Deportaire, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Bearbrown, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, the ayes have it. All right, moving on to resolutions, I'm gonna request a motion, we have asked from the correspondence, they're asking to pull sixteen dash forty-seven, it's a person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of an ABC license, and.
To table it.
Table that till next, till the next meeting.
Okay.
Entertaining motion?
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Schmidt, second by Mr. Bearbrown, all in favor?
Mrs. Table.
The motion is to table.
Table, till next meeting or get further.
That's true.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, the ayes have it. All right, resolution sixteen thirty-four through sixteen forty-six, anyone have any questions or want to poll?
Sandy, I don't wanna pull sixteen thirty-four, but if you look at the first line of paragraph three, I think we need to delete there. Whereas.
This was prepared by our tax collector, so could you tell me again where you're looking?
Third paragraph, first line, begins, the line begins whereas, and two thirds of the way down, if you read it, it makes no sense, I think you need to delete there, T-H-Y-O-R-E.
In the third paragraph?
Third paragraph. Begins whereas.
Okay.
It has been confirmed by John McDowell.
That there, there, the error.
Right, bingo.
Okay, I'm getting out of the original, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Anything further? I want to entertain a motion to move sixteen thirty-four through sixteen forty-six, sixteen thirty-four, amending the, the, move by Mr. DeLeo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Deportaire, roll call, please.
Mr. Burnham?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wade?
Yes.
Okay, next item of business, six C, Hyview Avenue Improvements. John and Bob, you wanna basically give all the residents a presentation?
Normally, we have an opportunity to set up some boards and have residents take a look at these, if you don't mind if we go back to, and have you take a look at, or compare it beforehand. As you probably know, council's entertaining improvements on Hyview Avenue, including but not limited to curving drainage and the possibility of side walks, yes, the road will be improved, which I'm sure we can all agree on. In our discussions at council, there was a desire for the staff to develop plans that did improve sidewalks, which is the, the one thing that I'm sure we may have differing opinions on. Existing roadway right now averages about twenty feet from, or twenty-two feet from Anderson Hill Road up to Ford Avenue, and then about twenty feet from Ford one up to Alcott Avenue. We are just talking about the section between Alcott Avenue and Anderson Hill Road right now. The improvements on Hyview Avenue, portion of Hyview between Mullins and Alcott, when it was paved, it was paved at twenty-two feet wide, the curb returns that come down Hyview from Alcott are at twenty-two feet, and at Anderson Hill Road, it's about twenty-two feet, so we were proposing a uniform twenty-two-foot wide roadway. In the section between Ford and Alcott, that would be a modest increase in the, the pavement through there. To give you some perspective, I don't know if you all have been down Park Avenue with the, the improvements there, for Park Lane, that's twenty feet wide. It's our, the staff's feeling that twenty feet wide's a little narrow for Hyview Avenue with the traffic that we have there, but appropriate for Park Lane with the limited traffic, except for to the recreation area. But Bob, maybe we can put up the one plan to give you an idea of what a roadway looks like, that would be twenty-two foot wide with a sidewalk. And Mayor, I'm not sure how you want the, the dialogue or communication.
Yeah, anybody from Hyview or any concerns, if you have any questions, please ask, if you wanna walk up and look closer at it, we can have it set up outside for you also before you leave, but anyway, with any questions, please just correspond.
What this plan shows is the existing pavement in gray, there's a, kind of a heavy orange line that shows where the curb would be for twenty-two foot wide road, and then where sidewalk looks like, could be, you know, posed right now on the south side, but also in an orange color. Existing edge of pavement is in red, that's really all that's shown on this plan right now, I think as John mentioned, we actually are about twenty-six feet wide with the curb, aims on Hyview near Anderson Hill Road, it's about twenty-three and a half average up at Ford, and then twenty from there to Alcott. I think twenty-two feet fits fairly well into the existing.
Like with most of the road projects, though, once you start putting curb in, right now the asphalt can follow existing edge of pavement, it can dip and do whatever, what it wants to do, when we put curb in, we're gonna be having straight lines, so that in and of itself creates some problems, we have high side, low side elevations on the properties, especially as you get up towards Alcott Avenue, so ideally, we're trying to maintain the same curb elevation as you go up the roadway, to really give it a nice engineered look, it becomes a problem again where we have high side, low side properties, so where we could, we can put in the twenty-two foot wide roadway, we're gonna need to grade back on the low side, we'll need to cut up driveways, little ways to make the grades work on the high side. Common, and we've had to do it on any roadway where we recently put in curb, but again, Bob and I, we're pretty confident that the twenty-two foot wide roadway, we can make it work. Sometimes on Mindmount Road, you wouldn't know it to look at it, ideally, we're doing a two percent crown on the roadway from the center line to the curb, on Mindmount, because the, the drastic difference in elevation, we had to go two percent, six percent, you don't even see it, it should come off the roadway, but those are some of the things that we would probably have to do on Hyview Avenue also because of the way up in Alcott and it's like, so, a stop installation of the sidewalk compounds that, because we have to go from our top to curb elevation at a two percent slope on the sidewalk to make sure that snow and water runs off it, so we'd be raising the, the far side of the sidewalk, which will create a bigger drop off the backside in some places, in many places, it works just fine. The other thing regarding sidewalk on Hyview Avenue, we are in the Alcott Avenue Historic District, so if it is the decision of the governing body to install a sidewalk with the town, to install a sidewalk on Hyview Avenue, we would have to apply to and get approval from the state historic preservation office. One more, one more step in the, the process. We have to do it with curb also, Chippewa has been, our experience with Mullins Lane was that installing curb wasn't deemed to be a, what's the word that they use? And so.
I should remember. Detrimental.
Thank you.
Detrimental.
It wasn't, it didn't automatically, we applied for, within a month, we got approval to install curb on Mullins Lane.
Talk about drainage.
Well, two things, installing curb, it helps out the drainage situation immensely, we immediately stop the drainage from running off down the driveway, we would have a malicious amount of drainage on the roadway, typically ending, I don't know, maybe two hundred feet from the end of Alcott Avenue, but the curb in effect stops the water from running onto private property, and we would be installing drainage up the roadway connecting down to existing drainage.
The section of road that we're talking about improving is about fourteen hundred and fifty feet, and we have inlets down on Anderson Hill Road, and I think that's about it, so there's plenty for drainage, but it hasn't, we haven't gotten.
You would not add additional inlets?
We won't, yeah, there is planning, we just don't know where, yeah.
In terms of estimating number in that length? In terms of estimating number in that length?
And folks, when we speak, if you could just state your name for the record? Thank you, thanks. But I know who you are, but just for everybody else, you know? So, thank you.
We'll likely need to be a cross drain somewhere near the bend. Another one as we get closer to Ford, maybe one on the easterly, northeasterly side of Ford, and maybe one more in the middle. So we'll look at one, two, plus four, four sections where we have.
Both sides or one side?
Both sides, yeah. The road will have some crown. I would think it'd probably be four. I don't know if we can get away with three, stretch in the distance.
Yes, sir.
John McGuire, forty-one Hyview Avenue. I have a wall in front of the property, a wall alongside the sidewalk.
Forty-one.
Stonewall.
The stone wall. What effect is this project going to have on that wall?
You also have this paved or walkway in the front here. Is that your house?
No.
Forty-one? They might have a number wrong here, which.
You show a little, you show a little paved or walkway. That's the stacked stone wall, Bob.
Okay, so that, I have, that's forty-one. I have the number correct on here. I think it has very little impact on the wall. There might be a corner where we have to reset.
That's okay.
The sidewalk is, you know, it doesn't conflict with the location of the wall. We haven't worked out the grade, but this is one area we do have a grading issue. Your property seems pretty flat in here, and we need to, on the other side, I think we looked about eight or nine inches, the edge of pavement on the north side is actually eight or nine inches higher.
So the sidewalk is going, if the sidewalk proposal goes through, would it be on my side, on the other side?
That's where it's been proposed, and it would have to come in grade-wise. It would have to meet your paved or walk, which would put it at about the bottom of your wall.
Okay.
So it's, that, this isn't the area that's going to require some.
Why did you choose that side of the street?
Sir, could you just state your name?
My full name is Paul Boyes, I have a thirty-three Anderson Hill, which would be on Hyview.
Thank you.
Well, we have, we walked with the public works committee and we kicked that around, and we recently installed sidewalk on that same side on Mindmount Road. It kind of gives you the loop up Alcott to Anderson. It's all, it's connected. Conflicts, grade-wise, it was a little easier to do. But it's, again, there's no design, that's just lower.
I'm Mary. I'm Mrs. Boyes. You're tripling the amount of sidewalks we're going to have to shovel.
Thank you, our neighbor should talk to the street manager and trouble me.
We happened this last snowstorm because we're on the corner. Now's dump, we had close to four and a half feet of snow on the sidewalk on Anderson. Now you're going to give us another fifty feet of sidewalk to shovel? Maybe we'll have a little bit less snow on it, but thank you. I can deal with that the sidewalk.
Anyone else?
I'm sure there'll be more discussion on the sidewalk. My name's Victor Karazin. I live at twenty Hyview. And many times, not to digress on your progression, but the sewer department has been in front of my house. I'm a volunteer fireman. I know them all. It's great to see them. I bring them out of soda. But are you going to make sure that everything, the sewer, is fixed and runs without them coming out before this work gets done? So nothing has to get ripped up in the future? Just sharing that thought with you.
We'll definitely camera the lines and make sure that any problems in sanitary sewer taken care of. I assume you're referring to sanitary sewer?
Yes.
That'll absolutely be taken care of.
Thanks. Anyone else say that you have a question in the back? No. Paul?
I'm Mayor. Paul St. On to sixty Alcott first. Thanks for having us, man. Appreciate it. Can you just go over the scope of the project again? I didn't understand whether, are you running and proposing to run sidewalks all the way up to Mullins Lane? And complete roadwork past the intersection of Hyview and Alcott, all the way?
No. Right now, we're just proposing to go up to Alcott. The portion of Hyview Avenue between Alcott and Mullins Lane was paved. Drainage was installed and was paved when we did the Mullins Lane project. We think we'd leave that section well enough alone right now.
What's the estimated cost of the road with the sidewalks?
We have five hundred twenty thousand without, I believe was the rough estimate we're looking at. The sidewalk, just the sidewalk itself, without getting into any grading details, would be an additional fifty thousand plus minus.
And it's usually what, a twenty percent contingency built into those numbers?
Not on the sidewalk.
Not on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Does there's a contingency put in there?
John, is, will you apply for the state for matching funds on that?
No.
Or the sidewalk, okay. Not there?
Not on Hyview.
The proposals to do through bond financing or through existing bonding?
Yes.
Your existing funds that we have, is the guess.
So that, you have to raise the money for sidewalks, is that correct?
Ralph, will we have to?
Not necessarily. No, that ordinance can be amended.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Wolfgang Heimel, twenty-seven Hyview. What consideration, if any, has been given to bent trees or anything need to be lost? I have a big maple right in front of my house, which I fear will be lost if we get the sidewalks on our side. And also with regard to the question of how we decided which side of the road the sidewalk should go on, was any consideration given to the setback from the houses and the street? It appears on the opposite side, setbacks are greater than on our side.
One thing we didn't discuss, and part of the reason that we chose this side. These two driveways right here become a real obstacle with putting in the sidewalk. Typical construction is a two-foot grass strip, a four-foot sidewalk. So you're six feet off the top of curb elevation. These driv, this one in particular is steep enough as it is. This one's steep also. We have to go back at a two percent slope. I want to say that driveway's ten to fifteen percent right now. So we'll have to go back at two percent and then try to come up and make up the grade. We're making it much worse, six feet back. We're going to make that driveway like this and probably have to go all the way up to the garage in order to make that driveway work. And so it gets really difficult to construct a sidewalk on that side of the road, especially on those two properties. With regard to removals, Bob, I don't think we identified any trees.
One four-inch, we're showing us a beech tree in front of number fifteen. It could be relocated, but I didn't think there were any other.
Trees.
Well, my tree, I'm on, I think this is mine, here.
Nineteen.
Yeah, and there's a big maple right here. My fear would be that that would upset the root structure of that maple.
Is it on this side of the?
It is, it is right that here. And the other question is, could there be relocation of any telephone poles? Or are those all beyond the six-foot? Since it's side of the street, there's nine telephone poles in that distance.
Yeah, there's a, there's a few of them that are actually, you know, we're showing a straight line. We may have to go around or in front of a few poles, like similar on Mullins Lane. It would be on a few poles. Right now, we're just showing it going straight just for presentation. But there's a couple poles that we wouldn't propose relocating them. We just curb the sidewalk either behind or in front, depending on where the pole was.
And perhaps to relieve the burden of one side of the street taking all the burden, was any consideration if we're going to widen the street, shifting the street over, perhaps two feet to the one side so that one side of the street bears a six-foot burden, the other bears a two-foot burden, or does one side bear the entire burden?
Well, I mean, that is a consideration, but yeah, we're trying to line up with the existing. Center line, centering the proposed twenty-two-foot wide where the existing center on the road. That's, we're kind of matching the crown. We don't really want to move the crown too much because we get into reconstructing. But again, we're meeting a twenty-two-foot wide curb on Alcott. You know, it just seems to fit basically very close to the existing center. The government is going through the sanitary handles. So we did walk, you know, if, if we didn't have sidewalk, we was probably looking for shifting last couple hundred feet, approach Alcott to the south. Driveways, as John mentioned, a few driveways that could give us a little grade challenge. If we did walk at it, we'd look at where the road should.
Existing with, then Paul said on sixty Alcott, existing width of the street is twenty curb?
There's some narrow areas.
Yeah, I mean, I measured it every fifty feet on the straights and every twenty-five feet on the curb. And from Ford to Alcott, the average was nineteen-nine. So basically twenty, probably. Anderson Hill to Ford, it was twenty-three, six. That's the average.
The more you, once it's paved, I mean, if you ever sit there during the day and watch the speed of the cars go up and down the street, you know, very few cars go twenty-five miles an hour. And once it's paved and this work is done, I would suggest that you're going to have cars flying up and down Hyview. I don't know if my neighbors agree, but.
Right around, on school that side. That's what we have, and in the morning.
And it's become quite a thoroughfare for drivers all over. And I think this is one of two unable, you know.
I think it's a problem regardless. I don't think, I don't think that the condition of the road has anything to do with speed. Those kids are going to go, and that traffic is going to do regardless of the condition of the road. So I don't think that's going to be the issue so much. It's, it doesn't, the road is, does need repair.
Yes, sir.
Back up always at the beginning. I agree with John that the road needs repair, but the justification for the widening doesn't seem to exist. You feel like it ought to be twenty-two feet. You want to put a sidewalk in, how many people are walking there? You know, yeah, it looks great. What is the justification? What is the analysis? And if you make it narrower, you'll slow people down. And this is, you know, I'm, I'm less interested in making it easy for some guy to cut through and go to Mullins Lane and speed down Mullins. It's been on Mullins since it's been a freeway. That is a raceway. We don't need to do this here as well. But my concern is, I haven't heard any justification other than we think. I want proof. I want that evidence. You're an engineer. You do everything on statistics and numbers. Show me. I have no reason for doing this. Fix the road. Fix the sewer. Narrow the road if you're going to do something. Slow the people down. This is a neighborhood. This is not through it.
Well, it is. It's a residential street, and if you look at the standard for residential street, it's twenty-eight feet. And I don't view this as a widening from twenty-six to twenty-two for more than half the road. That's a narrow. So that's.
Obviously, no.
So this section here, we recommend continuing the twenty-two feet. Where we have twenty-foot average, there's a four-wide on each side.
Why, why, why would you do that, sir, in terms of if you're, if you're going to spend the money, you would conserve a certain amount of funds by not increasing it to twenty-two at certain points, leaving it at the existing width. If you're at twenty-three, six at a particular area and you want it at twenty-two, why change it all the way to twenty-two? What's the rationale?
Well, we're putting curb in, so we want to have the curb running the street. So you pick a width, twenty, twenty-two.
You're doing the whole road over.
Yes.
So make it narrower. You know, I'd say, why, I get it. I understand, but Bob, you're proposing something and it looks perfectly straight and lovely and so forth. I mean, if you look at it from a pragmatic point of view, what Paul's saying is if it was narrower, you have, and if you put a sidewalk in, it would be less of an intrusion on the neighbors. I mean, I see no difficulty. It's not like we're racing fire trucks down the street. Although as much as it.
Bob, I know that we've had some debates on this, and one of the issues was on-street parking. So I think in fairness, just to have that perspective, because a lot of people do have on-street parking here. And it really is partly, you know, part of the recommendation that I think we had when I was on Public Works stuff as well.
You can park both sides?
I don't know what the ordinance is for that, but we have a twenty-two-foot wide road. You could park on one side, take up, you know, seven feet, six or seven feet, and still have room to get by. Twenty feet, I would say, would be no parking. If you go to twenty, there probably should be no parking on both sides. Twenty-two, you could still, you could still keep a sixteen-foot wide parkway. We're proposing four-inch height curb, which is not as high as a six-inch. It allows you to park closer to that, to the curb line. But if you go twenty, then really, you know, you can't really park on a twenty-foot wide road.
I think it's different.
On worst case, it'll slow up your traffic coming down the block. Because I noticed at twenty, where I'm in a wide section, they'll come down the block. And if you make it more attractive for them to speed even more, Paul and his lovely wife, they're going to have a lot more visitors in their backyard in that current. Because they're going to lose control and end up in there.
We need to go so that.
I mean, I just realized that when they were, when you were bringing it up, that's, you're going to make it more attractive for the kids to zoom down the street.
Just for what it's worth, that is the section where the roadway is twenty-four feet. Not to be argumentative.
No, no, understandable.
It's already twenty-four through there right now, so I'm not going to be a wide. You need to take the turn, let's see.
Sir.
Back to Mr. Kennedy Grant's point about statistics or data. What's the impetus for the sidewalk? What's the justification for that other than trying to get some uniformity? I mean, to me, we just did park lane, which you had mentioned previously, and that has no sidewalk. And there you have kids going down to the ball field. There's really no kids. It's not a path to any one of the schools that people use. The only children that walk on that street are the children that live on that street. I'm just trying to find out for the added expense and the imposition to the residents, you know, other than uniformity, what's the justification for sidewalk?
Well, that's the purpose of tonight's meeting, is to talk about the sidewalk. It was not in the original budget. How's it considered whether or not to put a sidewalk in? The argument is to improve the road with drainage and curb, and that was decided. And the sidewalk is what we're here to discuss.
So is it, is anybody?
That's why, that's why we're here tonight, for discussion, to hear from, you know, what your concerns are as residents.
My concern is, for me personally, it's, it's taking up a significant portion of my front yard. You know, I'm first pass in the historic district. To me personally, it takes away from the historical appeal of the street, and I would not be in favor of it.
So this is my personal opinion on this. Part of our master plan in that whole community act is have safe walks for our children to school. And just because children don't walk there now, that will change when there's a sidewalk there. Kids will, and their parents will allow them to walk on that street. Also, that street now, with the completion of this street, will allow the kids to go up and over into the Polo Grounds complex. Up and over Fort, which is sidewalk, down to CD. So this is the, one of the last streets to be completed up in this district for our safe walk programs at your school. This also connect now to Mindmount Road and connect the kids into the park, and also connect them onto Claremont. So this is the last connection to our total complex of safe walks for our children. Remember, we don't have buses in these areas.
Right, with all due respect, though, my sons walk to each of the schools. They go out of middle school and out of high school. And Hyview is not a connector to go to any of the schools unless you went online.
It will, it will, when you put the sidewalk, the kids will use the sidewalk.
They come up Mindmount, they go Anderson, to Alcott, get them. They come up Mine Mount, they go Anderson, to All Cut, to get to the high school. They come up Mine Mount, they go left to CD to go to middle school.
And they could go over the hill up to, uh, up Highview, across Old Fort, down into middle school.
Because that makes it longer. They come up, they hit Anderson, they make a left, they go down to CD, which is sidewalks the entire way. They would never come up. As lazy as my fifteen-year-old son is, he's not taking extra steps. So he's gonna go the shortest route. And Highview is definitely not the shortest route to connect to any of those.
Mr. Grant.
In addition to which, the kids aren't gonna go up to Old Cut or they're gonna cut through somebody's yard. I mean, my kids never walk down Highview. I mean. The, the, the safe sidewalks is great if there's a need for it. You haven't demonstrated the need.
It's in our master plan. And it demonstrated the need in the master plan.
That's not justification of a need.
I mean, I see more of the need on park lane, where you have kids going down, they're, they're coming down Mine Mountain, going down to the park. All of a sudden, there are no sidewalks. I mean, just redid that street.
Well, we did have sidewalks in original plan, but our bonding was blocked by certain, many people who had signed that petition.
Where it makes sense and put it where there's no need for it. That we're, we're spending money for nothing.
I feel there's a need for the sidewalk for our community, and it's in our master plan.
I say we let the residents of Highview aside, cause I think we get.
You know, you gotta think about this too. The sidewalk isn't for you, the sidewalk is for the community. Not really the impact of sidewalk, because you have to shovel it, basically. But that, that sidewalk is for the entire community.
That's an impact.
Mr. Grant.
In addition to which, they got two, you know, John, you and I talked about this in the past, the two-foot grass barrier is ludicrous. I mean, you must've broke that pile of salt down there in the, in the summer, and put the, put the sidewalk up at the curb, you know, the neighbors. I don't know how often you have been on Highview Avenue over the last, I don't know, twenty years? You don't need a sidewalk. I don't believe you need a sidewalk. You need to, regardless of what you say about the master plan, you need to show why it ought to be there. What is the population of students? The people here who raise kids from little to high school never had a problem with sidewalks. And there are no kids from other neighborhoods going up and down, because as has been said, that's not the way you're gonna go. Violate, I don't know, that's not. In addition, shall I say, the idea of putting sidewalks and curbs in the historic district changes the character of that portion of the street significantly. That is not an insignificant intrusion. I understand the issue about drainage. I think sidewalks are irrelevant. But I'm not sold on the nature of sidewalks, cause it changes that neighborhood's character.
Sir.
All right.
Just state your name.
I think the benefit of the sidewalks would be to save us dog walkers from the cars that are gonna be speeding through with the wider and improved road. I mean, we walk on the sidewalks on All Cut. Why? It's dangerous here at the end of the road. Right now, Highview is a bit dangerous to walk down the road. So if you're gonna improve the road to the point where the speed picks up, I, I understand your point, they're called safe sidewalks. But my preference would be to have the traffic slower and not have a sidewalk. But, you know, so a little bit of a gash would be.
Shouldn't something like speed bumps to make the traffic slower?
Sir, could you just state your name for the record, this is the first time you spoke tonight? Okay, thank you.
It's a balance.
Maybe we could just have a show of hands, sidewalk, yes, no, and list us any other questions.
Sure. Show of hands, again, mixed reactions, sidewalks, yes?
Wait, what was that?
Yes, for sidewalks?
Show of hands?
Yeah. No?
Sorry, I can't see Bob.
All right, no, there was three for yes, and.
Three for yes?
Yes.
And how many no's? Anybody count them?
Can we have the no's, please? No hand for no sidewalk?
No sidewalk.
Do you have to live on Highview to remember the no's?
Yes.
I think it's fourteen.
Uh, yeah, yep. Thank you. That's next, you're up next.
Can we do a vote for people that don't live on Highview now?
What is it?
Can we do a vote for people that don't live on Highview now?
Yeah.
One of the yeses, I believe, is not a resident.
Okay. That's right, he got his taxes raised, though, so. All right, Peter, what did you, did you suggest?
There are some people that don't, that have an opinion about living on Highview.
All right, Councilman Bearbrown suggested those who don't live on Highview, in favor of sidewalks? Okay. Not in favor?
I vote?
Yeah.
I said, oh, it's a no. Yeah, we.
Okay.
No, two no's for none in favor, but not.
And Dan, three. Okay. All right, John and Bob, thank, thank you very much. Residents, thank you for coming out and sharing your opinion with us, and thanks to our public work and engineering staff. Yes, sorry, yes. Folks, excuse me.
What are the next steps, and when would inspiration happen?
Okay, our Public Works Committee will continue to review the plans. And what do you have scheduled this year, John, for a start date? Do you have a start date scheduled yet?
Well, we still, we still have to go to Shippensburg regardless of what's proposed sidewalk.
Regardless of sidewalk.
Just putting the curb in, we have to go to that.
We don't anticipate a problem based on Highview.
We still have to nail down what the road width is. We haven't determined that yet. Then Bob's got to engineer, you know, the grading is, uh, it's not instrumental, but there's issues, you know, as we mentioned before, with the driveways. So that, it'll be a few months just getting plans together.
So you're talking late summer?
Late summer, fall.
Okay.
Will, will there be further meetings to discuss this?
As we develop the plans, if the governing body chooses to, we can have further meetings. I support them. I, I think it was good tonight. We, we exchanged our concerns and opinions, and, and we heard from you. Thank you. Paul, do you have something else?
Just one question. Can the council look into the issue of traffic comment measures, speed bumps, something? Other municipalities have it. Skip said it has to be approved by the state DOT. If it does, can we please find out whether you can put them in? Other municipalities have it. It's all driven to places that have speed bumps. Speed traffic tables, cables, walls.
Yeah.
They slow the traffic down.
And that, that we could look.
Has anybody called the police regarding speeding on their street?
Councilman has to move it. The police do a wonderful job. They really do. It is a constant issue.
I've had a quick present, I'm twenty, I had them drop the electronic sign. I'd allow them to put it in my phone, more.
All right, well, everybody from Highview, thank you, coming out tonight.
But John, can we look into, I mean, I think there are a lot of streets which would benefit from speed tables.
They're pretty expensive.
Own issues with speed tables, they're pretty expensive.
Pretty wide, I mean, they can, they can degrade it over.
Skip. All right, sir, sir, sir. Thank you. All right, next meeting, next item on the agenda, field maintenance program.
Where is the gentleman?
Cheryl?
Well, that, uh, it's that time of year again to figure out what we really confused. Last year, the council, I believe, it was the Kuanas Field, we decided that it would be organic product. It's up to you what you wanna do this year. I have it after the pricing.
Okay, this gentleman, all right. Come on up, Russ.
What are our results from last year favorable? Did it testbed the first year?
Question, Cheryl, how successful do you feel it was last year?
I think the professional can answer that for you.
Aye, aye, Captain, good answer.
She's getting used to this.
Any, any complaints from the residents?
I'm sorry, yeah, residents here.
No, no, I, I'm, the condition of the field, the condition of the field.
The condition of the field last year.
You know, we always never have enough, you know, that.
Hey, Skip. Skip, slide out of the door.
The Pop Warner football field down the middle is always a concern. I don't, I think for the past twenty years, we've tried to address that situation. But that, I think, is about the complaint. And we had one of, well, the problems weren't really a complaint, they just appear. Okay. So Russ can.
All right, so last year, we convened, we talked about options to do the fields to take them to the next level. We were fortunate enough to win the quote to take over the one for the borough. And we went into a program, there was some, some concern about the residents, you know, and rightfully so. They have, you know, they have to take care of themselves. Is, you know, what we were gonna put down, what the products were, what the reaction was, what the field conditions were. So we addressed those, and we decided to do one field, which was Kuanas Park, fully organic. And that's what we did. What will happen is, right now, the state of Kuanas is because it was treated, I believe, synthetically, correct, no wrong, prior to us taking over. Was it normal treatments at Kuanas prior to us?
I'm sorry.
Were you using or organic only, is that Kuanas?
No.
Okay, so prior to, prior to that, there was a synthetic regimen, what we controls pesticides on Kuanas before we took over. So we, we turned it over into a fully organic program, no pesticides or herbicides. And the field did okay. But here, it, it, because it's been taken care of over years, it takes a little bit more to see what the situation's gonna be. I would suspect this spring, and maybe even this early summer, you may see some crack grass issues there. You may see more weed issues there. So that's to be determined. Okay, and, and as the quote goes out, I guess, again, whoever is rewarded that will have to address that. Okay, so there was fully organic treatments on Kuanas, and it's synthetic on the others.
Um, Russ, hold on a second. At Kuanas, did you do the entire complex, or just?
We did the entire complex.
The baseball fields, too?
And we, we minimized treatments at the playground area. If we've seen any, we fertilized. We, we essentially just fertilized, uh, Kuanas, the fields as well.
So the spot hit?
Yeah, and, correct. And in the playground area, we fertilized, I think, I, I'll have to look into records, and I can give the information even for the parents. We fertilized either once or twice, just to get it going. And then we monitored, you know. I was on site for most of it, especially Kuanas, to make sure it went well, so I could field questions. You know, if, if people have questions, which we typically will do when we, when we are new to an area. So I was on site for those. With the rest of the parks, synthetic program started out well. Drought conditions, very difficult, they're very difficult here across the industry, no doubt. Okay, so I, I, you know, I all know both about it, you know, mother nature's boss. And we maintained, and I told Cheryl, we're gonna watch grub activity, and when we see it, we'll react to it, instead of putting preventative down. July, uh, no account, not, uh, no.
No account, no account problems.
No account, I'm sorry. Uh, ended up getting grubs. Now, I believe Cheryl has pictures, but grub damage can take your lawn in a, in a season, depending on the impact. It was a spot here and there, it was probably five thousand square feet total. Looked at, we came in, put grub done, grub controls just on those areas to maintain it, correct it. And then, you know, we did our weed control and our fertilization throughout the season. Now, keep in mind, weed control is targeted by law, it's not, it's not blanketed. So they see clover, they spray clover. If clove, you know, so that's, that's how it goes. They see dandelions, they spray dandelions. So it's not just.
Car bombing.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, um, fields need improvement, uh, fields need to get on a seeding program. But with the amount of traffic on those fields, which is good, cause that's what you want. You, you know, you want your fields to be busy, because that shows that people aren't enjoying themselves. You, uh, you gotta get on, I believe you need to get on seeding regimen. We tried something in July, but it was so hot, nobody can determine, um, at the Pop Warner Field, I'm sorry, Pop Warner Field, down the center. We seeded it in July, and they ran a water cannon, it just didn't work. Now, you know, we said we would touch that up in the spring and see what's, see what's going on. You know, whether we win it or not, we'll try to touch it up. Because it'd be better for the growth, it'd be a little more seasonal, it'd be cooler, and, and we'll see how it goes. I would recommend, whether we do it or whoever does it in the next round, is that you get into a dormant seeding program, and buy blankets. Who could have predicted, we're having your air conditioners on at Christmas, and at the holiday time this year, it was a great long growing season. I would ask Cheryl to go back in and reseed the park, but you can't predict that. But what we do at normally at, like, high schools, colleges, we'll go in and seed it, and they put a turf blanket down, it creates a microclimate. And when you peel it off in the spring, the grass is good and ready to go.
And what's, what does that cost?
Depends on the size. You can get a runner that'll go down the center at a Pop Warner Field, or you can get an entire football field size. You know, they run upwards to four, five, six, seven, eight thousand dollars. And we would install it for you and take it out, and you would have to wear out. Our guys could put it in and take, I mean, I don't know, I can't speak for other entities, but I know that's what we offer, and we do it. And that's something you can buy yourselves and do it, too. It's not something that we specialize in. It's just a lot of turf management companies, a lot of schools, a lot of parks that have timing issues, we use that as a, as a fallback. Because that blanket does create a nice microclimate, warms up the grass. If you get heavy snow, it's even better, cause it keeps it warm, you know, believe it or not. So, so that's, that's where the fields are. I think the field's improved, drought being what it is. But certainly, I think we need to get into seeding regimen, maybe rotate. You don't have to seed the entire park system. You know, you take your Pop Warner Field, okay, we're gonna seed it this time, this year, we're gonna have to make time for that, you know.
So you're saying, take it out of.
Well, for, for a few weeks, a few to, I, I would say for a few to three weeks. Now, Pop Warner is finished in November, right?
Yeah, usually second week in November.
Yeah, you can go in, you can get a turf blanket, and take care of Pop Warner Field in November. Rider University is my biggest customer, and we seed them in November every year. And then they maintain it. Some places, they put a turf blanket, some places, it just takes care of itself, you know, full dormancy. But it, it, it works. Rider's been doing it for years and years, too.
And then when can you get on the field?
When lacrosse season starts, what happens?
Whenever, uh, in the spring, you just be, I'm sorry, say, I can hear.
When lacrosse season starts.
When does that start?
April, whenever it's born.
You'll be ready to go. If you seed in November, you'll be ready to go. But again, the pressure is gonna thin it out and seed, you know. So you should always be on seeding regimen. If you take what you do at maybe you do at your house, everybody throw seed down at their house every year in a fall, that's kinda where you're gonna think. But cost prohibitive, because you're talking, you know. If I were, I think we put these numbers out there last year, if I were to airy, slip seed in top dress, the Pop Warner Field, you're looking at like twenty-five hundred dollars. That's without the turf blanket.
And Russ, we do, we have in the past, though, every year, and, and just, we need to just keep in mind, we do seed that field every year. Tommy has done it, we buy a pallet, we seed here, and we've done it. But again, you know, we have one maintenance guy who, you know, we try and get everything done, it gets difficult. Plus, don't forget, we need to order that, well, we do seed, well, not November, we don't order, but we do need to order that also. And Kuanas does have irrigation, so that helps those, those properties also, which is good. And we also have no intention, we have always talked, and I think the council brings, never to really do anything other than on the playgrounds themselves. But we basically really just have the one, we do have park lane, which is, you know, that's really not the grass area that has all the natural chips, but around it. We don't, we plan to ever spray, at least, you know, that grass up at Kuanas Field. that has all the natural chips, but around it, we don't, we plan to ever spray, at least, you know, that grass up at Kiwanis Field, Peter's Park.
So what's our plans for this year, same as last year?
Well, I'm asking you, that's, that's why.
Well, it looks like we probably need more time to really evaluate it, it looks like, right?
Yeah, I think, do you want to say anything or?
I mean, in my opinion.
Thank you, just state your name for the record.
Chris Moran.
Thank you.
I also got a degree in turf management, and I, I think it sounds very good. And I just think that the biggest thing you have to have is a little bit of patience when switching to the organic. Because after 20, 30 years of putting down synthetics and fungicides and herbicides, you've killed the microbes in that soil. And it's going to take some time, composting, top dressing with compost, top dressing with natural materials like that. But it's going to take a couple of years. And so I can, I can understand not completely doing everything that way, but continuing on this program on that field and, you know, seeing results in a few years and seeing that change without having to put down those harmful chemicals. I think it will, you've just got to have some patience.
I'm sorry, your name is Chris?
Chris.
Chris Cross. And I agree with you, that's why like when we, top dress is shredded leaf compost.
Yeah.
We have it made from green pro materials, which is, it doesn't matter where the materials come from, but they shred their material a couple of days ahead of time, so, and Chris, you know this, if you, you can have a pile of compost and say, oh, this is good stuff. But if it's latent, it packs, it's no good. We have our stuff shredded by Green Pro Materials and Middlesex, a couple of days, three days ahead of time. We pick it up, they deliver, or I'm sorry, they deliver for us, and whatever field's going to be, and we're on the park within a couple of days and done, and done in a few hours. Depending on the size of park and what you want done.
This is my friend, and I met with Russ and Samara last year and Cheryl, and I'm thrilled that we did organic.
I would love to hear that it's going to be on every field that the children are on, because I do, you know, I think we need to change our expectations. And when you say you spray dandelions and clover, I, in my opinion, there's, that is not the harmful, those shouldn't be there for the children. You know, I, I don't see a need to spray for aesthetics. Kids don't mind if those are there, they want.
Like grass.
Right.
No, I, 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 again, the, the choice of the program, Chris, you know, it's being fair benefit, the choice is the governing body on what their expectation is, and we supply the options. I'm here to supply the options. And any, any turf management company will tell you that, you're here to supply the options, and it's up to, up to Cheryl as the director of parks and, and the governing body to make that decision, and if we make the adjustment, we monitor it.
Yeah.
But, you know, there's, there's costs involved in this, and you understand that. And, and so, so I think it was a successful year from that standpoint. You know, I think everybody's got a little, we're coming to the middle on it, you know, and trying to find a good option for everybody.
And I, I do agree, and I think it's, and like you said, with changing expectations, like, I mean, I get it, when you get to certain levels of play, you know, your field's going to have to be at a higher level. But for certain ages and regs, the field doesn't have to look like NFL, it doesn't have to be that way. And so I think changing those expectations and giving those time, I think you can, like, you guys will see that the organics will work. It's just you gotta, you gotta let it work for a couple of years, and I think, you know, I think all the people in turf have agreed to that. And I just think it's hard, the biggest push or the biggest problem with organics and going in that direction nowadays is expectations. You know, you see certain things, you see golf courses, and you see football fields that are just immaculate. And it just can't be that way everywhere, or I don't think it should be. I just don't think the inputs needed to get that are, are, you just don't have to have that many inputs on every field that play. And I, you know, I get the differences at some levels of play, but, you know, I think for a wrecked field, for a town, I just don't think that the dangers that some of those chemicals possess are worth what you're getting from it.
Anyone else? Council members?
I just seconded, all right.
Okay.
I just, Samara, um, and I came to the meeting about this last year, and I agree with Melody that to me, dandelions and clovers shouldn't be a threat. They should be embraced, but because it's our most vulnerable part of our population, that's playing on these fields.
We could if the town was, you know, I'm on the environmental topic, and if, if it was something that the town would look into, there's a sustainable New Jersey program, and if we could declare that our parks were pesticide-free zones, that's a points program and something that Burner's supposed to do, we've spoken about this.
Yes.
Key Pack and Gladstone and Bedminster and Burner's Township, they're all doing these programs where you can put this beautiful little ladybug pesticide-free. Parents that come to the town, because I, we go into parks in every other town except ours, because I don't want my children near pesticides. So if that is something that we could kind of, you know, guarantee that our playgrounds are pesticide-free, it's a program that the town should be involved in, and it's a great boost for the community.
And again, I mean, there's options, there's options at every level. Chris, I, I refer to you, you have the background, but there's options that I, there's no doubt. We do Bedminster's work, you know, Bedminster River Road Park, Millard Lane Park, I don't know, I don't have the other two in my mind right now. But, yeah, there's options everywhere, you know. But again, Mayor, Council, it's, it's up to you really, and we'll provide solutions and answer questions for you then. Hopefully we have the opportunity to continue to work.
Okay. We had a good year last year, you guys did a good job.
Any other questions?
Anybody else from the council?
I have a question, does Bedminster have a full organic program or are they just?
No, we did the same, we did the same thing this year. I think I mentioned I was dealing with John Mance, and, you know, there's some concerns, you know, everybody has concerns. And we took Millard Lane Park, we did the same thing, that one struggled a little more, but we'll, we'll, we'll see. I want to determine, I will be able to tell come April, May, you know, because once that, once that growing season starts, you're going to find out, you'll, you'll find a little more about the lag. Maybe not exactly, depends, sometimes it depends on the weather and pool, and it takes a little while to see. You know, you may not see it, but trained eye, you're going to say, eh, we better talk about doing something quick or, you know. And it doesn't necessarily have to be synthetic, but we have to make decisions on what the program's going to be and understand that. You know, full organics, you got to think seeding, you know. I know we do, I'm going to use Governor Lippes, our Berkeley Heights, Governor Lippes in high school, and we use their seed because they prefer a certain seed, and we come in and do the work for their seeding program. And we bring our top dress materials, because they don't have the options to do it, we have the manpower knowledge and the equipment to do it. So if it's a savings to buy your seed, we'll work with you, we'll suggest something, and then, and then we'll come in, and if, if you say, no, I want this seed, then that's what we'll use, you know. So, so we, we'll even come and do the work for you, but that's, that's cost savings. So there's options there. I would suggest maybe, you know, I could sit down with council, with Cheryl, and we can talk about options down the road.
Okay.
You know, in the next week or two, if that's the direction you're going to go.
Now Cheryl, you, you need direction tonight, or from the council?
Whenever you want to start the project, I have to get up, go out, do the pricing, that's, that was.
Okay, all right.
Whatever you guys choose. I have a question, does Miller Park, does that have a water on that field today?
I don't remember if it does, I don't remember if it does. I know we did the organics at the municipal building too, and that is irrigated, so it's a little different look. But when you have a non-irrigated park, the synthetics have a tendency to be a better option. But again, you know, you can irrigate all your parks.
Yep.
And please come in and just Kiwanis irrigated?
Yes.
It is, all right.
Kiwanis was.
So we have Kiwanis, Skip, you have a question?
What's the, what's the differential in cost from being organic, partially organic, or having no organic? What's the difference of cost from one to the other?
Well, it's, it's cost, it's one and a half to two times possibly, depending on what you get. When you get into, when you get into like milky spore and things like that, milky spore is a grub control, a organic grub control, and it takes three or four years to get it sold to be effective. Then you're talking about seeding cost on top of that. So where you drive, it may not be the treatment cost per se, but where you drive the costs is you're adding, you know, just for the, the Pop Warner Field, you're adding another $2,500 seeding if that's the direction you go. That's a potential, you know. Well, although, sure, we do Ridge High School, fully organic, we seed it every year. I mean, I would say that's probably a, we've been doing it for years there, I would say that's probably a good snapshot of what it looks like. There's clover, there's some clover issues, I mean, depends, you know, there's a level of acceptance that creates the need. So, so it depends on what you're trying to accomplish.
So Cheryl, right now we have Kiwanis is organic, correct?
All of it.
And the playgrounds?
Just, there's no, nothing sprayed.
Okay.
There are other playgrounds in town, like could Claremont be, could, could that not also be part of the organic program? Right, is that the only other playground?
We don't, I, I don't know, it's, the playground is, is a separate area, the playground doesn't even have grass, it has the.
Chips.
Chips, yeah, like a special.
Claremont, we only treated the field turf, I'm sorry, we, we treated playing surfaces on the other, on the other parks. And at the, the Polo Grounds and Emeka, we treated the playing surfaces and the perimeters, you know, on those parks. Because, you know, the, the directors always move the fields around and try to get more games in at one time, so you never, never really know where the boundaries are. So we treated the entire surface.
But we can say that we're not treating any of our playgrounds with any sense that, and sit, and that, right? Playground.
The playgrounds where, yes, where the kids are playing, correct.
So do you spot spray in mulch if you see something?
Nope, not unless it's ordered and asked for, that's not what we did this year.
So we have to say, all playgrounds are all organic for you to not do that?
No, you just tell it's not sprayed, it doesn't necessarily have to be there. Like, oh, let's use Kiwanis, perfect example, because you have two fields, two whole fields, right? You could say Kiwanis, we want to fertilize even with the organics, playing surfaces on it, and we won't touch the perimeters. You know, and then it's, it's, you got to understand, you know, I mean, that's, whatever the level of acceptance of, whatever the long term is, you know, I'll guarantee, I'll guarantee the, the playing surfaces at that time, but, and, and Chris, I, I'm sorry to keep referring, but, you can, you can just tell us instructions and say, hey, we don't want the playgrounds on, we, we really didn't do anything in the playgrounds. We put organic fertilizer on Kiwanis with no pesticide, herbicides to wake it up. Because I see it was established, 90% of the time, really, honestly, playgrounds are usually rubber mulch or, or mulch.
Yeah.
Or sand, I should say. So, so it's very rare to have a grass stand in a playground situation, and we treated the field, and nothing else like.
And no insecticide.
And then no, no glyphosate, no insecticide.
See, this is how I had some of the problems.
Well, that's, yeah, I know, I know, when we first met, when we first met, there was a little confusion on glyphosate is Roundup, Roundup, it's not like the herbicide. You can, you can, if you don't want no grass, that's the thing to use. But we don't, we're not using them. Do we use them? Yes.
Well, you could say you spot sprayed Roundup on.
Not Roundup, on some other.
No.
On every level, on big.
No, 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 no glyph, no glyphosate on anything, even, even up at the big parks. No, it was slightly herbicides targeted, but no glyphosate. If I sprayed something on the playing surfaces, you would have brown spots all over the place.
I do, I, I understand that this is a cost. Cost is not just money, cost is a health for our children, and the environmental stresses that they already have in the world, you know, just consider that their playgrounds and their fields should not, they should be a safe place.
Well, fully understand, and that's, that's why.
I agree, I think it will cost to change things, because you're going to have to seed more in the beginning. But once that soil is healthier, your costs could even come down, because you won't have to seed as much, you won't have to spray, you can't spray, you know. So the cost will, just like anything, when you, when you renovate something, you got a cost in the beginning. But then hopefully you put in better windows and a better washing machine, and all your costs calm down after a while. And so that's how I see the organic process, is you can air that soil so it is protecting against weeds and insects versus having to spray something on top of it to, to protect it from the outside.
And to add that, my urge is that you guys just have patience, because like what Russ said, this is going to be really kind of one of the first years where a lot of those chemicals are just starting to get out of the soil, and maybe there's going to be a crap grass issue. Can that somehow be communicated to the residents if there are some concerns that we're in the process of a transition to an organic field and is it normal and to be expected? Rather than all of a sudden this, this tossback into your lack of the organics isn't working, and then we go back to synthetic next year.
Yeah, I think, you know, we started this last year, and it was successful. I think we continue on the same course unless anybody has any other suggestions.
No.
We continue to grow as we meet, year by year.
Yes. We should continue, we need another year to take a look at what we got.
Yeah, I mean, in a few months, we'll see. Last year, last year was a tough year for, with, with the drought, so it's going to be, it should, it should show itself at Kiwanis pretty quickly. And it's, I got it on my calendar to kind of take, take a peek. Whether, whether we win or not, I want to see what the effect was of changing, taking that change in the timeframe. So we'll be looking at it. And, and I, I want to let Cheryl know.
All right. How's the rest of the council feel?
My, my recollection is, stuff, material out of whispers on this topic is that it takes about three or four years to do a changeover, but then it's sustainable, absolutely sustainable. I haven't seen it, and I know a lot of people give up after the first or second year, but they're literature, that's what they do every day.
All right, so we're okay with our direction we're in right now?
But we.
At least three years. How about the seeding for, the seeding up to the Polo Grounds? This, we're going to seed the Polo Grounds, Cheryl? Seed the Polo Grounds?
Have I seen them?
Seed, seed.
Have we seeded them? Yeah, we did last fall some.
Okay.
Just down the strip, no, not all of it.
We, we did not, we did, we did bear spots in July. We came and wanted to seed, we tried it because they had some games going on, their coaches were concerned.
Yeah, it's heavy.
So we asked to see if we could do something, we gave it a shot, it was, the heat was, it was.
We don't, as you know, we don't have the luxury of the towns, the rest of the fields, so that field is constantly used.
Yeah, I, I would say, I would say even without the conditions being the way they were from November to December this year, which essentially you, you extended your fall growing season, I would say consider a normal seeding and consider maybe a turf blanket. If that seems like the field that's got the most, the least churn as far as the aesthetic of it and, and what's going on all the time, I would consider, and I'll get some numbers together on the, on the turf blankets, and I'll, Cheryl, I'll have it, and then it's certainly up to you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thanks for spending the time.
Thank you very much, very good, thank you, have a great day.
All right, so Cheryl, you can start in your praises. Thank you, thanks again for coming out, thank you.
Would you guys, or, or, or go to another company?
Should go out to bid.
Should go out to bid, or state contract pricing, yes.
That's the law, we have to do that way.
Okay, Jack, this proposal, our next item on the agenda.
Yeah, I, I don't think you have to do anything yet, I just wanted you to be aware of it, every town has got, yes.
I have a question, instead of getting money back, why don't we think about getting them engaged and using their antennas on top of these poles in order to make it better for our police? We've had situations at these big towers, we could set up a matrix and actually solve the problem that we're having with our police calls and our fire calls by utilizing this at no cost to the people in the town. Throw it in there, like they could have one or two channels, talk about, you know.
Well, I was going to explain what you're saying, because.
Like, it's internet, voice over internet, that we could have some type of secure channel or something through there that we could use for the police or the fire as a secondary backup or something that we can use instead of having these big, huge towers and everybody complained about it, we could actually have a matrix throughout the whole entire town on top of poles, and they just give us exactly what we need.
As a backup, not a primary, right?
Yes, unless it works so good that we can use it at one point in time, if the technology, you know, catches up.
I was supposed to have a meeting with Brian Kelly later this week about some improvements to the radio. We were going to talk about, there's, there's a, there's a modified microwave system that, that works like a military radio works, except on different frequency. And I hear, we haven't confirmed yet, we're making calls, that the county and the state police use it. And if it's available for when they come to town, that was the complaint, that they couldn't communicate with us.
Right.
There might be a way to patch that in, even with current equipment, with the addition of some sort of, I'll call it, an upgraded, like a new circuit card or something like that to current radios. But we haven't had that meeting yet, and we're meeting with a company called Northeast Communications to do that. So this talk might be premature from where I stand.
Yeah, it could be premature, but, I mean, you figure it's going to be anywhere from 100 to 200 feet per, you know, from pole to pole or whatever, you could easily reroute.
It's a repeater system.
A repeater system would be pretty awesome, especially if something else was to go down, to use that as a backup. Instead of, you know, getting a couple shekels a month or whatever, we have something that we can actually use that could be for the town.
That's what happens in the urban areas.
Right.
They use the poles.
You know, we have all these fills up and down, and the poles go through there and they just repeat each other, and we can utilize that.
That's a great idea, it's just, probably next meeting I'll have a lot more information on that.
Very good. Anyone else have questions on this, Jack, or?
As I say, I don't think you have to do anything, I want you to be aware of it, every town, and I'd like to see what happens in other towns. We, we had a similar company coming in 10 years ago, MetroCard, and they had all the approvals and then they went away, they went bankrupt. So I just wanted to. we went bankrupt, so I just wanted you to know at this point in time that it was out there.
It was like, Claire, to me, are they going to do every road in town, or just sort of center?
I think they talked about a total of thirty-one.
It was a fairly small, like.
Yes.
Number, but I wasn't figuring out, couldn't figure out where they were really planning about doing it.
Yeah, it wasn't easy to understand, it's a word, everybody, it's, I understand. I'm hungry, I'm going to have to make a work session.
Okay, any further discussion on it? No? Okay, six S vacancies?
Yeah, it was only on here because at the last meeting, we did talk about a few places, but didn't have names to recommend, so I don't know if you're ready, it's just here just in case.
We have a couple of names, was Daniel going to check into it? He's gone.
He's still looking, he didn't come back with any recommendations.
Right, we added Jane, so she's been added.
At another meeting he did?
Uh, we did that at the very first meeting, I think, so that, I don't know whether the three are after her appointment or before.
Yes, this was as of, this list that I gave you this week was up.
Okay. And we're just.
There were some resignations that we hadn't heard, at least I hadn't heard about until last week.
Okay. Yeah, then I would, so, we have one or two that the committee's studying, but I wouldn't take any action tonight.
Do you want this to keep showing up, or just leave it until you're ready?
Let's leave it till we're ready, and we'll bring it up.
Did you, did you get any skill banks out from anybody?
We don't have any new ones. I gave you the list, it has everybody from fifteen and sixteen, the one that was in your package, and you can see there aren't very many people on this list that haven't already been equipped with anything, so, now you don't have the active pool at the moment.
All right, so we don't have any, right now to fill, so, any candidates, so.
I had one for open space, I don't think he sent the skill bank.
Yeah, just kind of, just kind of skill bank in.
He said he was going to send it today.
Okay. All right, next item, six G, two thousand and sixteen budget update.
Ralph, Ralph's first.
All's good.
Right up there.
Yeah, I wanted to just let the full council know, members of the finance committee, because we've been working diligently over those last weeks, but we are basically completing with the budget for two thousand and sixteen, there is some, we're waiting, of course, for verification on the state aid numbers from the governor, that should happen by the end of the month, hopefully, but we've worked very, as I said, diligently on the various things that the council is looking to add to the budget, so, of course, we have parking money for Parking Authority, Parking Eater Maid, if you prefer, to, to answer that area, an additional, an additional replacement for our road department employee that's left us, we've got all of those things in the budget, and we will also be under about two point nine eight, two point nine five percent for it not to be raised by taxation, which is what we've been consistently for the last few years.
And that, that includes the debt service, so without it, it's just over one, I believe?
Yeah, three hundred and seventeen thousand dollar increase in debt service, so that's how we started out, and worked our way down, and we were able to do that and maintain our surplus, our balance remaining, actually it'll be increased more than it was last year.
Capital?
Capital, our capital budget is five hundred thousand dollars cash, no borrowing is intended for this year, and we are not completed with that yet, but we're, there's some things that are in there, but there's still a little bit of jockeying going on, but we have time for that, as I said, we won't introduce probably until either the last meeting of this month or probably the first meeting of March, that's really the only piece, the utility, the recreation utility is set, and you all saw the email that I gave with that. I explained the situation to the finance committee at our last meeting, they're in support also, you know, giving another year for the rec utility and try and see if we can keep that going, our sewer utility budget is completed, and they are in sound position, and we're continuing with the capital projects there.
But no new capital for them?
Uh, we, there are some things planned for this year, but it's also included in the, acquired the bond that was sold in July, some new money, fees, there will be no increase in sewer utility fees this year, we're on schedule every other year, next year we will come to you with a slight increase in that, but as I said, they are very solid, they, and they are totally paid for all the expenses, everything to do with the sewer comes out of the sewer use fees, it has for the last three or four years, I believe, but that's continuing, and we're in good shape.
Does it look like we'll have any money for our additional mill and pave wish list this year?
Uh, yes, yes, that's a part of the plan.
That's part of it?
Part, I can't say exactly how much at this point, but it is, it is part.
Start towards it.
Yes, yes, that's considered also.
In one of our meetings, I asked Ralph to, you know, look at other places that could be cut, not used, so that we could keep things down and flat, and his hair finally settled down again, it was on N for a while, but between him and.
He even got a haircut, yeah.
Between him and his, his other people working on this, he was able to find some things that could be removed without hurting anything, so the idea was, you know, what could we cut out of the budget that wouldn't really hurt services or anything that we really need to get done? He also worked out a couple of swaps of, you know, one priority versus another on some of the things that were requested, so did a great job, and we're very comfortable.
Mike and Eric, and I donate our dollar a year towards it. It's already, what do you think?
I'll get you about an inch and a half of square.
That's what balances a budget.
That's it.
Your three bucks, three bucks puts this whole, so, anyway, as I said, I don't want to take too much more of your time, but I just wanted to let you know that we are done. We've accomplished all the things we set out to do, what the council was set out to do, and still saving our limits as far as tax increases, and.
And then we'll see the return index rate ordinance on the twenty seconds.
Sandy wanted me to tell you, and I said if I remember, of course, I forgot, but as always, she reminds me, yeah, we will have, we've had the index ordinance to increase it to three, three percent, we've done that the last, we've done for the last five, six years, but that'll be on the next agenda, so that'll be in place already when we're ready to introduce, and we'll go from there.
All right, good. Thank you, Ralph.
Thanks, Ralph.
All right, six H correspondence, we have none, does any other council members have any concerns or comments before we go into closed session? Seeing none?
Will we be coming out?
Um, yes, we'll be, we're going into closed session to discuss redevelopment, attorney-client proposals, affordable housing plans, and open space. Yes, all right?
Contract matters and personnel matters.
Contract matters and personnel matters to be included with that.
We bringing in breakfast today?
Motion, move.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Deportaire, Miss, Councilman Schmidt.
Twelve fifteen, I was still on the floor.
Thank you.
Welcome. Twelve fifteen, I was still.
Get you guys.
I started, right, I heard it was cold.
Yeah, I woke up this morning, forty-four degrees.
Really? My mother told me it was fifty-six.
Uh, westbound.
She's a hobo, she's a little south, wow.